All righty, good morning, everyone. We're going to start this meeting. All the board members are here and the superintendent is in here as well. So I'll ask for your attention, please. Thank you. Today, we're going to be having a conversation around our budget. And so I'm looking now at, we just called this to order, which is AO1. Now, we're going to look at AO2, which is Budget Development. And we have two speakers, we have three speakers, really. And we want to go ahead and allow them to speak and then we'll ask staff for their presentation. Okay? Superintendent, are we okay with that? Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, we have Linda Baron.
She's actually a classmate, so she will appeal and speak in front of you, I think, at your next board meeting.
Okay.
But we are a new parent, who chose to arrive.
Okay, how about for Nik Ram, okay? And both for Nik and Sahi? Okay, very good. All right. Who wants to be first?
I can start.
Thank you.
First, I would like to, my name is Veronica Rammati and I'm a parent at Beview Terrace Elementary of Ms. Claire that is here. I want to tell you first that I'm extremely satisfied with what is happening at Beview Terrace. She's in Jody Robledo's class and I'm very grateful, my daughter with severely handicapped is learning to recognize letter at this point, extremely happy. And the reason why I'm here is because you are proposing change of hours for next school year for this school. And I find this decision unreasonable and not acceptable as a parent. The proposed bell time would be 7:15 to 1:40, 7:15 in the morning. My daughter is bussed every day, right now, the bus picks her up at 7:05. I need to wake up at around 6:30. If you are going to change what the bell hours, it will mean waking her up next year at 6:45 in the morning, 5:45, I'm sorry. So this, I believe, is not reasonable. The reason being, I think Mr. DeBeck replied to Mrs. Baron, and Mr. DeBeck, I found your email not, how can I say? I didn't find satisfactory, actually, because I didn't find the content very reasonable in the sense that you say that everybody is going to have to sacrifice because of budgetary issues. I can understand that, but I understand that the main reason for changing the bell time is busing. Do you know that there's only two buses serving Beview Terrace Elementary right now? Two buses, for two buses, you're going to affect the life of kids like my daughter and their families. And I want to explain to you that we are taxpayer, we are families, we are very concerned. One thing that you need to understand is we're talking about five to 10-year-old kids. I'm sure you have children. These children are not autonomous and your main mission, I believe, is serving the children and serving the well-being and the well-learning of children who are acquiring right now literacy skills. For my daughter, it's a little bit difficult, but for most of these kids in this school, they're learning to read and write, and these are crucial skills. And you are serving them. That is your mission. And I don't think that by sacrificing them, by making them wake up so early in the morning, you're going to serve their best interest. And the main reason is, for how much money? How much money are you going to save by this decision? I really would like an answer on that. Because I don't believe you're going to save much money by obliging these kids and their family to pay the price of minimal budget things. The other thing I wanted to tell you also is that we are LaRoya resident, there is no, it's finished? There is no special education program in LaRoya. And again, I'm very happy about Beview Terrace Elementary, but one thing I notice is that LaRoya-
You wrap it up, that didn't mean you were done.
LaRoya schools start at 9 o'clock, so they are not inconvenienced by bell time changes. And again, I don't understand why kids who are in Pacific Beach or would have to pay the price-
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Madam President and respected board members, I am Veronica's husband, she's very passionate. She's been a crusader for Claire since she was born. Every progress that I never thought she would attain, she has attained due to the school system that you have provided. That doesn't negate some of my concerns that Veronica emotionally expressed. I'm going to try to put a little bit more business to it. I'm a USC MBA. I would be more than happy to see your numbers and see if it really, I don't know how many of you individuals, I know you have a lot of responsibilities, really know what that meant in terms of dollars for these particular schools. I know you have a much bigger picture, you're looking at things at $35,000 food. What that should not, I refer to President Obama, we need to use a scalpel on some of these things rather than an axe or a hatchet. You know, there is precision work required for precision cases, not an axe across the board. That is one of my points. The second point that I refer to is, I do not know Mr. DeBeck, but what my wife meant to say is that the email lacked significant scientific or information content. It was just no accurate support to everything that she had pointed in detail regarding the five or six reasons. It was just the hatchet approach that I referred to. And I did not really find that from a business perspective very informative or useful. Madam President, when we voted for you a few months ago, we did it because of your lifetime commitment to individuals and community. And we are educated people, and even if we were not, we could still be reasoned with. And I find the approach rather unreasonable. The LaRoya School District is something that, at least, we live in LaRoya. We live in LaRoya, we've been there for 12 years. It's at least inappropriate, if not illegal. I don't know exactly what's going on here, that there is no accommodations for our children in LaRoya and they're getting pushed out further and further because of budgetary reasons why we live in LaRoya. Their school hours, as my wife accurately referred to, are completely different than someone living in PB or, you know, some other part of town. And we see no logic for that. Yes, we live there, but we are not asking for any special treatment, we are just saying, where is the reason for it? Are we, living in LaRoya, somehow entitled to have, or kids that go there, to more or better or more comfortable situations than the rest of the children? It just, I'm a manager, I make my living managing budgets and multimillion-dollar budgets and dealing with people. Some of these things seem like the scalpel approach and the specific children were just falling through the cracks and not considered. I ask you to review your decision. Review your numbers. Let us know if we can help in any way, because we certainly are willing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next speaker is Mercedes-
Could I respond? You know, if you want to wait until they're everybody's done, I'd still like to speak-
I think this person is on the same topic, won't you wait till she's done?
Yeah, well, okay, fine.
Mrs. Mercedes Brown?
I also have a son named Jacob and he's eight years old, he's autistic. And changing the, this is really hard. Because, I'm sorry.
It's okay, take your time.
As a parent, we're always struggling with insurance, IEPs, and just putting a shoe on, getting them to eat. Changing in simple times, 7:15, maybe for other kids it's not a problem, for our kids it is. It takes just for my son to wake up and eat breakfast, it takes him probably half an hour. A test that all of us take for granted. It was not natural for him to learn how to eat. Now, making him the bus, I mean, we already live in PB, we're locally. So for him to start school at 7:40, the bus will pick him up at 6:35. I made the decision then to take him to school, so that way he has time to wake up and get ready. Now, what would happen if next year I cannot take him to school? What time the bus is going to have to pick him up then? 6:35 locally, that's like maybe 10 blocks from my house. It's just, what, 6 o'clock? It's just, it's not reasonable. I know most of you may have children, may not, maybe some of them do have special needs, maybe not. It could be from ADD, PDD, autism, I mean, many disabilities. Sometimes we take things for granted. Children like this, I mean, we cannot be just rolling the dice and figure out, this year is going to be this, next year is going to be that. I mean, we're asking you to support us. We're already fighting the world since they were born. We fight the doctors, like I said, insurance companies. We want some kind of stability. I mean, we don't have them in the classrooms because every year, it changes, teacher changes, which is understandable. But simple thing like a time for the bus to pick them up, I mean, it just takes time to get them ready, 30 minutes, like I said. So I want you to reconsider this. We're asking you, I mean, it's just, it's unreasonable to us, a child who's a special need child, well, any child, to get up at 6 o'clock. Especially in winter time, when, what time, I mean, it's dark. You get up at 6, it's dark. So we ask you as our parents to reconsider this. Like I said, we already have a setback. We don't want other setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeBeck?
Sure. I'm glad to be able to respond because a lot of the emails I get regarding transportation or bell schedules don't fully identify the needs of the kids other than just getting up in the morning or going to bed later or whatever. There are three funds that we operate under. One is for our magnet schools, that's the one we voted on earlier as one of the potentials. Another special ed, which I do not have any knowledge that we have any intent to change special ed busing. I have no way of knowing when somebody asks me whether or not the content or the impact on your child is whether they have an IEP or a 504 kind of agreement, but that would be different than just a general bell change schedule. And then the last one is VE, so the voluntary integration program. So it would never have been my intent to, for example, impact any special ed program with a change of bus schedule. But should the whole school be affected by, let's say, some kind of busing? A good example is, the one we reeled on was on magnets. But let's just say we take a school that has a, and I'm going to just make this up, not your school, because I don't even know which school it is. You have a school with 1,000 kids coming into the school, some are resident and some are not. Let's say that of those kids that are coming to that school, 100 are bussed in. Now, you might say, well, if we, you know, we only have here a line item that says we saved so much on, 1,200,000 on busing. We don't have the savings on your individual school or anything like that, but what we have is a savings. But let's say that of those 1,000 kids, 100 bussed in, that the whole school has to change their start time because of 100 kids being bussed in. That, as a manager, somebody would say, that doesn't make sense, because obviously you should be able to do something in the beginning of the day and something at the end of the day. And if the bus schedule affects the bussed-in kids, that would be understandable. Why should it affect the rest of the kids who are neighborhood kids? Okay? I could have an argument from somebody that's one of those bussed-in kids saying, well, wait a minute, you're making me get up too early to send my kid to school, but this is, these are separate arguments. We can't just have them all in the same argument. We could just say, well, what logic can we apply to this problem? So my first answer to most people is, and I hate to take this a long time, but it basically is, I don't think there should be a reason why a school should change its schedule because a few kids are bussed in at a different time because of savings. That's one point that I could just say I believe in. So if you're a neighborhood kid, then the school change wouldn't happen, because the only thing that would change would be the schedule for the bussed-in kids, right? So that would be one argument, but at least I would say that the majority of the kids in that school would not be negatively affected by a bell schedule change. There may be reasons why that can't be done, but this board has never heard those, any answers like that. So then we come to the next question, and I don't remember answering, I do remember answering you, I try to answer all emails. Sometimes I'm not specific enough because I don't know the specific case, and I just, I have to say what I got to say, because it's the basic understanding. We're talking about $1,200,000 in savings, that's collectively over all the busing, magnets, not over special ed. So, you know, so if somebody's being bussed in on a magnet basis, I don't personally believe you should change the school's bell time. I think the buses can come late, we'll figure out a way at the school to organize around that. If the kid's special ed and they're being bussed in because of magnet, then they ought to go back to special ed busing and just, you know, there's no savings, there's just basically going to get there when they have to. So the problem is, the solutions we get up here are collective solutions that don't individually handle individual cases. If we operated under a principle that we all agreed to, one that schools wouldn't change their schedule unless there was a majority of the kids bussed in, we're going to affect it. That might be a policy decision we'd all make. But if we just say, well, no, we're going to save so much money, it doesn't matter what happens, and we're going to change the entire school because we got to, because of buses, that's an argument that really we should have as a group here. And maybe staff should tell us, well, it's illegal, or it's too much trouble for us to shift the school around to fit the kids. Instead, we're going to make the kids fit the school? I'm not sure about that. I mean, my take on it is, I would be willing, if I was in a school, to make my school fit the kids, not the kids fit me. And I can't speak for individual receiving schools on how they behave, but we are the policymakers, so we should be able to make that decision. That wasn't put before us, and I apologize for that. And my answers are generally based on what I know, not what could happen. So anyway, thank you for listening, and that's that.
Ms. Nakamura, please.
Yes, you know, I can't help it, I'm not, this is not the sole purpose of my comments, but you must have caught Mr. DeBeck on an off day, because I have to tell you, he's known for his emails and their details, so, you know, please, that wasn't normal. So, in his defense. But, you know, I am struck by what you said about management and about research and reasoning behind this. And, you know, certainly the special education population is a more fragile population. I think that should be taken into consideration, I agree with you on that. But, you know, recently, it's come to my attention that there are also impacts with regard to attendance. That the kids that are bussed in and the attendance problems that we have frequently, you know, they're reporting that their parents don't wake them up. They're late or they miss the bus, because their parents aren't getting them up. And, you know, they're tired and exhausted from, you know, whatever it is, they're working three, you know, jobs, or they're just, I am not a morning person, so, you know, I was very grateful this happened at 9 o'clock today. But, you know, that, I think the impact on attendance needs to be examined, particularly for these bussed-in students. And I'm also wondering about student achievement. I've mentioned this before, I know that we have, there are extensive studies that recently have been done regarding the impact on student achievement of early start times for teenagers and circadian rhythms and all of the rest of that. But I really would like to, I'm sure, I am certain, somewhere, someplace, someone has done some research, and I think as a policy decision, we need to draw a line in the sand about, you know, this is where, we're not willing to go any earlier. And we cannot be alone in this in the state of California. I mean, I, I'm curious, I wonder what the earliest start time is in the state of California? Is there any law against us starting at 5 o'clock in the morning, you know, in order to save budget savings? You know, just how far have other school districts gone? I'm not willing to go even this far. We've got some schools where we really need to look at this, and I think we need to examine the research behind this, because if anybody can find research, Dr. Greer, it would be you. And he has his hand up, may he speak? You don't?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Greer?
Thank you. Our bus transportation system, as is all transportation systems in the state of California, very intricately intertwined, you pull one string here, the shirt sleeve falls off on the other side. You don't just change one bus or one school's start stop time and all of a sudden, without it having cascading ramifications. Now, you can do this. You can look at when the earliest school starts, and you can move that start time up 30 minutes. When you do that, you move the closing time for all schools in the district up 30 minutes. It's a yo-yo effect. And so if we're starting too early, we're getting out at a certain time, and when you push up, what you also get into with high schools is you get, keep people complaining about primarily two things. Kids getting to work for evening jobs and athletics. Having said that, the solution to starting the school early is moving everything up 15 minutes, moving everything up 20 minutes, moving everything up 30 minutes or an hour.
Or hiring more buses.
Hiring more buses, I can promise you, is not the answer. I mean, I promise you-
No, I know we're here for the budget, but I just don't want the illusion that that's the only solution.
I'm telling you, I've done this dozens of times. That is the only solution to a district-wide approach. You cannot just move a start-stop time for a particular school, because we're running double schedules. And when you start, when you do that for that school, you're going to have somebody else come up with a similar request for another school and another school and another school, all are very good requests.
Have we, forgive me, you know, we receive so many materials, have we actually received a document for every, surely you do read an awful lot, but do we, for, what's the start time for, I'd like to see an analysis, what's the start time for every school in the district under this? But also, what does it mean for those kids that are riding the bus? You know, what time will they be picked up? What's the earliest start time for a student?
We'll be glad to get that to you.
For the earliest, the earliest pickup time at every school?
We'll be, I'll be glad to-
Because I've got one school where there's 70 kids that are getting bussed in, and it's going to, you know, a very early start time.
We understand.
You know, and I, but, well, understanding and caring can be, and I, Dr. Greer, I'm sorry to say that, because I like you an awful lot and I trust you, but I just don't think this is good for attendance or student achievement.
Well, I'll be frank with you, I don't, well, I'll just leave it alone, I'll just simply say, I don't need to justify my caring about children, and I'm not going to do that this morning.
I think that one of the things that you're hearing the board ask for consideration, and I think is whether or not the busing is adjusting the school or the school is there and the busing students are participants in the school. And that we look at some logic, not logic, but some ways around that. I understand the initial comments that you made, because when I toured transportation before they got their computers and they had their strings all over the place, you knew if you moved one string, all the other strings started moving. But I think the question that is being asked is, again, I go back to that clean slate, if this is a clean slate, how could we fix the schools as well as the busing to ensure that we get the best bang for our buck? And hopefully, that is what the staff has been looking at, and we understand that each, that we can't just move one or two schools. But in order, in answer to Ms. Nakamura's question, and certainly, I walk most mornings and I was walking, I guess it was, must have been yesterday, at 6:15. And there were already children there at the bus stop waiting. So I know that there are children on the corners very early. I know that we have a lot of special needs students in our district, and I understand the economic pressures that we're under right now. Again, that gives us an opportunity to be more creative with how we are doing things. So, but I think you hear what we're saying, and maybe you can give us a reply back.
I hear clearly, and I'll have that information to you within the day and share that with you. We are also implementing a new bus software scheduling system for the district. And we have had Phil Stover and Terry, who is one of the foremost experts in the country on transportation scheduling and management, looked at our routes, looking at our schedules, and I will say to you again, it may not be the answer you want to hear, but we will give you the answer that it is. If you move the start time of any schools up, you move the dismissal times forward. Now, there's another piece of this that as you look at kids coming to school, your people sometimes are under the impression that when you say, school starts at 8 o'clock, when you have a bus that comes in late, even if it's habitually late 15 minutes every day, those kids, when they get there, you can start school for those kids when they get there. And so, anyway, I'll get that information to you.
Okay, Dr. Evans, and then Mr. DeBeck.
All right, I'll be very brief, because I know we have a lot to cover. Basically, I mentioned last week about when we made requests to staff and actually realized it was actually on the agenda, previous session, about the bell start times, that we needed to have a full research and investigation into that. One of the things that I remember about the $1.2 million savings, and that's part of the problem when it's all put together, was that $1 million of the savings had to do with CPMA, which is a total magnet, totally bused school. By changing that one bus time, uh, start time, which wasn't popular, but certainly they're happy to keep their school, that was about $1 million of the savings. And so then we were looking at $200,000 savings spread out over all these other schools. So when you look at 1.2 million, that's one thing, but when you see that 1 million of it is taking care of almost all of it, and then the 200,000 is causing all of these problems in the other area, that needs to be looked at. I understand that the whole issue is everything is connected to everything else. We have the issue of limited number of kids, the eight kids per bus and minimum, which is very low compared to 15 in other districts. I'm not saying that could be changed immediately, because that would kick kids off the buses, but we could move towards that. So we could move towards that. We could also look at what Mr. DeBeck is saying, in certain schools, when there's just a very few kids that are, that are being bussed in, as far as making arrangements for their schedule to be slightly different. All of these things need to be put together, so that we come up with a comprehensive solution rather than just one simple one.
Ms. DeBeck, please.
My statement is probably a simple question. Are there any, any staggered starts in the school system? Have we ever, or do we now, have any cases where schools have accommodated the fact that some kids come later than others? If there are no such examples, you'd have to conclude that the school is saying, we will not change, the only argument is busing. But see, if you have a staggered start, the bus savings will still exist. The only difference is that the adults at the school have to change their behavior and their, the time they start work or the time they leave work. One of the biggest tensions, and Dr. Greer did state it, one of the biggest tensions we always face around busing or the time a school starts is whether or not we're helping kids or helping adults. Okay? Now, it's a, I agree, that I taught high school a lot, having kids come in late means that practice for football sometimes runs into night, all right, in the evening. Because you can't have a late start and have everything at the end of the day not truncated out to another place. That's true. So maybe you implement some starts around that. But see, I don't remember in our busing that we have a combination of, let's say, high school students and middle schools and elementary students being bussed together. For a while, that was considered not a good idea. See, I don't even know what studies have been made around whether or not there's a common set of buses for special ed, for Veep or Magnet. Seems to me like there ought to be. And if that's the case, then, you know, I think we should start, since we're in dire straits, we should start putting the, if we're, if we're a business and we have customers, we ought to accommodate our customers, not turn around and say, well, the store is closed, goodbye. Because these customers bring in income, and we need to understand that. So we need to be customer-friendly, and I agree with Dr. Evans, if $1 million is one part of the savings and only 200,000 is the rest, let's jump to 200,000 and find it somewhere else, especially with all the problems we got. But I have to say it, with all the hard work that staff does, I don't think they're using imagination to solve some of these problems. They're basically saying, it's the way we're going to do- They're basically saying, "It's the way we're going to do it is the way we're going to do it." We've said so much in transportation, but we haven't figured out how to make the other end of it more comfortable for our customers. That's too bad. We'll get to that. And meanwhile, there are victims like you and I'm sorry about that.
And thank you for coming this morning to speak. And one other question, Dr. Greer, I'd like you to look at, and the comment was made about the special ed services in the La Jolla area. And I was under the impression that we were working very diligently to ensure that kids were able to attend their local schools and get their special ed services. So it's, you know, we need to find out if there's any of those services at all in their area and being pushed further and further out, we need to look into that, please.
That too.
All right. Having said that, thank you very much for coming and speaking. We would now ask the staff for their presentation on their budget, proposed budget.
Thank you, President Jackson. We've just passed out to you some information. We have, our staff has continued to work long hours. They were here late last night trying to scrub numbers as a result of having updates from PARS. PARS also worked late last night, giving us accurate numbers because we want to make sure that we don't double count. Because we know that if we give you information, this information has to be reliable, it has to be something you can count on, not only this year but for the coming years. So if I can, we would like to start the presentation first with the most updated PARS information that we have, and it's the sheets that you have passed out here that look like this.
And can I ask board members that, for this, for both sessions, we do the PARS first, but can we just write out any questions that we have and ask them when the staff is finished?
Thank you, President Jackson. We'll start out, you can see the different classifications or groups of individuals that were able to participate in our early retirement incentive program. And you can see in the first column that starts right after those numbers, and I'm talking about the page now that's the landscape page that's running this way.
Where's that? I got one that's this way. What's this? It's AO2 on my-
Ken, do we have an extra one that you must have been short on one?
I got two of them like this, like this.
Here it comes.
Oh, wait, here's another one. Why don't we just throw them away?
Okay.
All right, I got it finally, but I don't know if I need them. Whatever. All right.
On the landscape version that you have in front of you, you can see the very first column under certificated non-management, SDEA Union 1. You can see 0.00 and a total down at the bottom of 76.33. All of these numbers that you have down here are predicated on our not refilling that number of positions in each one of those units. We have gone back and checked and double-checked and triple-checked. These are positions that we will not refill. And I can say that to you with a great deal of assurance. And I'm very comfortable with that. It took a long time. I sat with staff personally, Chuck sat with staff personally, and we went by these, position by position, person by person. So these are the number of positions that people who took the SERP and we will not refill their positions.
I'm not good with double negatives. So zero for SDEA implies that we're going to refill every single one of those positions?
That's exactly what it means.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Like I said, double negative.
That's exactly what it means. Now, we have another 400 positions that were temporary positions, okay? From those temporary positions, we will not refill all of those positions. We are going to refill on an as-needed basis. But as we said to you, when we originally had the people from PARS come down and we were looking at these positions, we talked about you at restaffing teachers at 100% level. And we did that from day one. This is not something that's new that we've just come up with to make this work. When the PARs representative, and he's here, he's sitting in the back of the room here, wave at everybody, there he is, and he'd be glad to help answer any questions, but when we first talked with you about this, we talked about restaffing at 100% level. So the, you can see in savings number one, from all of these categories, the first year will generate $8,945,876. And then you can see from year two, year three, year four, year five, what the accumulated savings will be. Now, let me pause for a second. Let me, to be transparent and to be clear. If you look at year four savings of accumulated savings of $19,891,189. And you see in year five, the accumulated savings is $19,331,819. If you subtract those, you will see that in year five, with this proposal, we will be short about $550,000. Now, having said that, what I would like to suggest that the board consider doing, which LA did, is to keep our PARS retirement window open for teachers for an additional two weeks in the event that some more teachers want to participate. Now, you didn't hear me say that for other groups. Because the other groups is what cost? In other words, to generate more savings to eradicate that $550,000 at the end of year five, several things would have to happen. We either need a few more teachers to take the SERP or as we go through this every year, there has to become more positions that we eliminate and don't refill. And we have to manage this carefully because if we don't, we'll get to year five and we will show a deficit of about 557. You can do the math. I apologize, we did it earlier. But I wanted to make sure that I took time to hesitate and to pause and let you know that because I don't want any surprises. In five years from now, I don't want a big financial crisis because we didn't manage this right. And I don't want you or future boards to say, "Well, we weren't aware of that." So I want to be real clear about that. But you can go down through each one of these, year by year by year, and see the cumulative savings. Now, that does not mean that we saved 8.9 this year and next year we will save 14 more. It's 8, 9, next year you can see we will save about $5.9 million. And then the next year, you have to do the cumulative subtraction. And when you get down to year five right now, in this particular model, again, you would be about $557,000. Ken has the exact numbers. I'd ask him to share that with us just for the record.
So there's no savings between year four and year five?
That's correct.
That's right. As we move into five, between year five and six, we will actually be done paying for the SERP. And so then you will show in year six, a $13.8 million savings. So it jumps into year six. So this is just showing the five-year effect of the SERP.
And that number was 577? What, Ken?
It was 559,370 loss in year five. Now, there's also a couple other assumptions, or at least one other assumption you should factor into this. We didn't consider a raise for this year and for next year, but for years three, four, and five, we assumed a 3% raise. So if you took those out of there, there would definitely be a savings, but we're anticipating that we will have some kind of a raise in years three, four, and five. So those are incorporated into these numbers.
Well, you have to make a point, we're trying to make, folks, is you have to make assumptions. You don't have to agree with our assumptions. And any assumptions that we've made that you don't agree with as a board, if you will tell us, we can adjust this and take those out. But these were assumptions we made after having long conversations about, and we have no way of knowing. You know, the state's budget is worse, we hear, than what we thought. But, you know, hopefully we'll have a turnaround down the road and we'll be where we are. Okay?
Are we talking about this or not?
If you're down to your presentation, we can, yes, we can. Okay, Mr. DeBeck was first though, John.
Okay. So we're assuming 100% replacement of the teachers and we're assuming 591 teachers taking the SERP?
Correct.
So when we go back to our discussion of budget choices, some of the budget choices involve class size increases.
That's correct.
So have you been able to look at, or, you know, is there a way for us to look at options in terms of the SERP savings depending on the number of teacher, teaching positions that would be reduced based on classizing?
I know your question and yes, in time, we will be able to do that. What we're waiting for right now from PARS is a final list that is cleaned up. They have given us the names of the teachers who have signed up for PARS. When we check those back against our record, it may be, for example, a Molly Greer signed up for the SERP. We don't have a Molly Greer, we have a Margaret Greer and we have a Marguerite Greer. And so we've got to go back and match, they will match, but we have to go back and match socials and get the right people. When we do that, we will be able to say to you that of all of the 400 and some temporary positions that we have, here's how many are elementary, here's how many are high school math, here's how, science, guidance, et cetera. And then we will say the folks that have taken the PARS, here's how many of those that we have. And then we've got a running list of vacancies. And then, as we make decisions about reducing, balancing the budget, then we will be able to show you, this number of people will come in and match here and this number will match here and this number will match here. Quite frankly, we feel very good about it compared to what would have happened had not this PARS been at the level that it is. And the staff, and we've spent long hours talking about this, I don't know that every single teacher will match up, but I will be willing to bet you that a huge majority of them will. And then the ones that don't, we will come back with a proposal of this is how we'll handle that. And there's a variety of different things we can do and we can, you know, talk about that at another time. But we are, I promise you, we're on this, this is a major challenge for the staff and I. We will, if you decide to adopt this, as I've said to Ken and James and Sam and others, managing a SERP is more, is as important or more important than the actual numbers because if you don't manage it, you won't have these savings.
Yeah.
DeBeck, please.
Okay, well, we always seem to have questions because of the information we get. I see, I'm still talking about our big horizontal chart here and I see the, there will be a total replacement of the teachers and the last number I had was in the 530 range, somewhere in there. And so then, but now I have classified non-management and there's 15 not being replaced. I don't know how many chose to retire, but let me just use that as an example. Okay? Are management cuts a function of retirement or are they based on need? For example, if all of a sudden you have a bunch of people retiring, you say, "Okay, we're not going to replace 15 of them." If that whole, if all 15 were the only 15 that were retired, then you're basically saying to the board, probably don't want to say that, but if you look at it, you'd say, "Well, wait a minute, these jobs didn't have to exist. We don't need them?"
That is-
Well, let me, don't answer me yet, but what I'm getting at is that's a question that comes up when you don't see the number of people retired and you see only those who you're not going to replace. Because, well, but it's not on this sheet.
On the second sheet.
I know, but see, I, we're talking about one sheet, not all the sheets. Okay? So my point is that if I'm seeing this not replacement number, then the assumption I have to make is, well, some of those jobs should never have been there. Okay? And if that was the choice, we should have been able to have found them this year instead of next year. And those rollover savings would be of value in all of the things we do. So anyway, I, you know, if I have to play, patch together the answers or the information that I get, then there's something wrong with the information I'm getting. Okay? Because if I didn't see a non-replacement, my first question is how many, what percentage of the people that retired is that? So some, you know, somebody smarter than I have has looked over here, found some other piece of paper and said, "Oh, now I figured it out." Well, I didn't, I'm not that smart. Okay? All I do is take the paper I'm looking at and try and analyze it based on the information on that page, not on some other page. So I didn't see, now, let's see if I can get this right. Okay, classified non-management, Union 2?
Right here. I apologize.
Is what?
Right here.
103?
It's 26.9, Union 2, it's 9.52%.
103 people.
Okay. You know, I'm not going to fiddle around. I can't understand it. Makes simple sense to me that the public can't understand it. Okay?
If I could, part of this particular issue that Mr. DeBeck's talking about is you ask us-
Watch your mouth.
You ask us to take a look at central office organization. You ask us to take a look at the number of central office staff and the number of managers. As we reorganized the central office and reorganized it-
Get it from here.
-to be more of a service center and to better meet the needs of our schools, we redid the central office and you've already approved two-thirds of those reorgs and we'll talk some more with others with you today in closed session. As we did that and we reorganized the positions, we did that with no regard to, we did not know who would take the SERP. We had no idea who would take the SERP. We just reorganized as you asked us to do, to try to create a central office, I think as President Jackson has said, was lean and-
Lean green.
Lean and green.
Education machine.
I started, I didn't want to say mean, but it was green. And that's what we did. And as a result of that, frankly, when, I'm sure this had an impact. When some people looked around at the reorganizational structure and wondered, "Where will I fit? Or will I fit?", they chose to go ahead and take the SERP because they had the years of service in. Now, that's what happened. This was not an effort to try to organize around people who took the SERP and did not. And these folks sitting out here, you can look out, they'll tell you, I said, "Who takes the SERP has nothing to do with how you reorganize the department." Because we had no idea who would or who wouldn't. As you can see through this, at each one of these different levels, you can see the percentage of people who took the SERP that were eligible to take the SERP. So there's an awful lot of people in each one of these divisions that could have, for example, in this particular one, 9.52% of the folks that were eligible to take that SERP took it. So there's a lot of others to state. So this was not an effort by us to organize around who would not take the SERP.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nakamura, please.
Yeah, I, first of all, I actually, contrary to Mr. DeBeck on this, I think this is really clear. It's good information and I appreciate the staff, you know, making this as clear as it is. It's all pretty much here. You might have done an extra column for plus and minus on, you know, for, in the projected savings and in which categories, but, you know, we can do that. So the concern about 500 and roughly 550,000 in year five seems rather long ago and far away compared to the savings that we can do right now. And I have said many times up here, I don't gamble with other people's money, but in this particular instance, it's far enough out there that should we need to reorganize or, you know, reconsider, this buys us time to do this. It is also, I think, have we done any analysis or guesstimating or daydreaming about the fact that, you know, we have a significant number of administrative positions that are leaving? We are probably going to be, we're going to definitely need principals and vice principals. I would expect staff from the teachers' ranks to be applying for those ideally. Have we, you know, any, what the normal, what would the attrition be for that?
Well, you have right now, the last I saw, and I haven't seen the most updated numbers, you had about 23 principals who would take the SERP. And I'm not sure, Ken, whether it's principals, I think that's just principals and then we probably have another five to seven assistant principals.
Correct.
So we will have a number of people, I quite frankly worry that we don't have enough people in the pipeline and that we are going to have to get out and recruit.
Well, they shouldn't promote people just to promote them from within. I really want the very best people in, you know, in those positions. But I would think $550,000 is roughly, what, eight teaching positions?
So roughly at the top end.
I bet we could find eight teachers within the district that are going to get promoted to be principal.
But the point I try to keep making is, I concur with what you're saying. I just would ask the board to be patient. We will work through this and we will come back with you with a plan that will work.
Dr. Greer?
That $550,000 is the, I believe, and the staff believes and PARS believes, that the best way we can get at that, quite frankly, is if you agree to allow us to keep the wonderful teachers open for another two weeks, we believe that we will have a handful of teachers that may change their minds and just, just four teachers or five teachers over that amount of time would cover that.
Does that, however, keep- Does that, however, keeping that window open allow teachers to reneg?
No.
They wouldn't, they don't go...
Teachers that, once they've applied, they have...
Once they've applied, they put their paperwork in.
Yes.
That's it.
These are people that have their paperwork in.
Okay. The economy could take a turn for the worse, and all of a sudden, we've got a bunch of people back in the pool if the window's open.
And what will happen is, you may have, just again, to cover all bases, you may have, if we do this for teachers and no other groups, you may have other folks say, well, how about me? As I've told you before, any additional classified people that were to apply for PARS without a teacher also applying will cut away out of your 8.9 million dollars in savings, because there's not a big enough difference in beginning salary and ending salary.
Yeah. Well, okay, I'm comfortable with the two weeks, but I'm also comfortable that I, and I think we've got at least eight or 10 teachers out there, and I'm hoping that have administrative credentials and, you know, would want to, you know, join the team up here. So, I'm in administration. Okay. I'm, actually, again, my compliments to the staff. I think this is very nice and clear, very quick work and a lot of hard work. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Evans, please.
Okay. I think this is good information, and I'm glad it's done conservatively, for example, with zero, I mean, 100 percent teacher replacement so that we're not guessing about what we might do, but this is what we can do. And now, I think we need to look for some flexibility, because obviously, on the teacher issue, we have the flexibility between, to put it extremely, between replacing all of them down to replacing none of them. Now, I'm, that's way too extreme. I'm saying that's the leeway that we have. And what would be helpful, and I think that's what you're going to do, would be, over the next few days, once you see who has actually qualified for this, to give us that information, because obviously, it makes a difference if it's a lot of K3 teachers have taken retirement versus high school teachers and so forth. And the whole SERP thing, to me, seems to be the middle piece between the other two, which would be revenue and budget cuts. And it's also tied in together, as Mr. DeBeck was saying, I mean, in terms of the class size issue, that's related to the SERP.
And we'll cover that in a few minutes.
But that's also, okay, and that's also related to the revenue. And so, we're going to have that flexibility in both directions. As far as knowing what the revenue is, how the SERP maps out, and then, how that would fit with our reductions.
You're correct. And what we're planning on doing with hiring the teachers, quite frankly, is we have already given the allocation out to the schools. And so, we already know how many teachers have, the dollars, the FTEs, have been allocated out to the schools. What will change about this a bit is, we've got to be careful with the teachers we rehire. And we're going to work with PARS with that. You cannot have a teacher with 34 years of experience retire, and then, we come back and hire a group of teachers that have 20, 25, 30 years of experience. That won't generate the savings. And so, we've got to be cautious. I'm not saying you can't hire one like that, but you've got to be real careful. That's what happened in another large district on the West Coast a few years ago when they went through a SERP like this. They didn't manage it well, and they hired a lot of experienced teachers from surrounding districts who may have taken a SERP somewhere else and then wanted to come to another district and work, and they got in trouble. So, I hear what you're saying, we're on top of it.
All right. Again, I'd like to thank the staff for their work. I know it's been a rough couple of days trying to get all these numbers crunched for us. I think that we didn't actually speak about the sheet that was not, you know, mentioned early, was mentioned at all, but we know that it does make it a lot clearer when the information is all put there together. So, again, thank you, and we'd like to move on to the next part of the budget, please.
Thank you. And what we would like for the board to do today, this is a workshop meeting today, but we would like for you to consider adopting this and to approve allowing us to open that window for teachers as quick as is possible. And if there's room...
Okay. So, the...
Second.
Okay. And there's a motion for us to keep the SERP open for the teachers for another two weeks. Can I get some dates on those two weeks? What do you mean? You mean two weeks from today, two weeks from Monday, yesterday?
I see a lot of up and down. Two weeks from today's date? That would work.
Okay. Two weeks from today, whatever date that is. We have a motion to keep the SERP open.
For teachers.
For teachers only.
The teachers only.
I'm sorry. Is the motion to accept the recommendation, to accept the SERP for all groups?
And...
And to extend the two-week deadline, right?
Okay. All right. Okay. Any more questions or comments?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that's clear, that we are, in fact, saying we will accept it for all of the groups, and for financial reasons, we're opening it two weeks more for the teachers, because that's where we can generate some more savings.
And the lawyer is back here, so lawyer, Mark, Mr. Bristow?
Yeah. I think it's legal. I don't know if SDA was given notice of this recommendation, but I think...
My question about legality had to do more with the others than SDA. In other words, if you offer something to one group, do you have to offer it to another group? Or is there a question around that? That's the issue.
No. Generally, in retirement incentives, if the motivation is economic, then you're fine.
We also, President Jackson had this conversation this morning, is if you open it, and I don't mind doing this, if you open it up for all groups for another two weeks with the caveat that any cost incurred by one of the other groups has to be offset by savings generated from another group. And that gets, that's very convoluted.
Then, people don't know whether it's really going to, they have it or not. We just want it to be really clear.
That's the point.
My motion was that.
Okay.
My motion was exactly what we said. We accept this, and then, we extend the sign-up time for teachers.
Exactly. Very good. Okay. Any more comments? If not, please vote.
Good job, staff.
That pass is 5-0. Now, can we go to the next part of this budget?
Thank you, President Jackson. The next part of the budget is revised 8.02 that you have in front of you, and it is just a recap of where we find ourselves right now. If you look at the top, this is a little different format, the recommendation of President Jackson. We started off with revenues, as you can see, and you can look up at the top, and you can see, we started off with a beginning balance of 78,683,621. We, as you know, we had a freeze, and year-end reconciliation of 4.5 million. I'm going to pause there. That is our best estimate at this time because our books have not been closed. But this, we feel very, James and his staff, based on projected spending, feels comfortable with this.
1.2?
4.5.
4.5. Oh, okay. Spending freeze.
And we believe, we believe that there could be some additional savings there. We wanted to be conservative, and I don't mean a lot now. I'm not talking about, it may be twice that much, but I don't think so. But we wanted to be conservative, and quite frankly, folks, this is the best we can do because we've not closed our books. These are freezing spends, and again, as we can reconcile our books to this particular point in time. What we have said, and you know this, to principals and to others, if there is an emergency, if there are situations that just you feel like really have to take place, you can contact either Chuck or I, and we have been approving those, and we've had some feedback from boards, on board members, on some things that we have been able to resolve. But this is a conservative number that we feel relatively good about.
Before we leave that, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that, I'm sorry.
I got to push the button.
Does that include site funds that were received from grants that we swept? You know, that a single number of spending freeze and year-end reconciliation is, doesn't, does it mean those grant funds that were swept out of accounts that people had, that they may have claimed they hadn't spent yet because they were thinking about it?
Well, what we've done, Mr. DeBeck and other board members, is we've put together a reconciliation file that we're not quite complete with. That's what Terry's talking about, the year-end close isn't quite done. But we've broken it into categories based on how we froze the dollars. So, for instance, from a Title I perspective, there's still some ability to make, to essentially purchase out of those things. So, anything that we were able to readjust budgets, we entered those into our PeopleSoft system, which is our ERP system, to adjust those budgets. So, now, we have a marker in PeopleSoft that says, your budget was 100, now it's 95.
Okay. But I guess that didn't fully cover what my intent of my question.
Okay.
Okay. I'll use an example. It's in the field of music. An individual school received a music grant, okay? They put that grant into their budget.
Right.
And so, then, because it was an ending, it was a balance that hadn't been spent, it was swept out, and they didn't get to spend it. Okay? The grant was given to them by outsiders, okay? Not our own money. It was outside money, but it remained in their account. Since then, I've advised all the granters that I've talked to to put the money into a foundation that's only used for one purpose. Therefore, it never gets into the district's hands, because the district seems to have swept that money without consideration of the source.
I would say...
Okay? Well, let me finish. So, then, if that's where that is, I still have trouble with that.
Yeah.
Because I have to face some of the granters.
Sure.
I have to face some of the people who gave us money and say, well, you know, this was a special occasion, and we had to sweep the money out, and the money you gave us for a certain purpose isn't going to happen anymore because we needed the money. I have a hard time telling that to people when I go back to them and saying, geez, let's help out the music program again, or help out the arts program again, when they saw their money vanish into the district's budget problem.
What I would say to you is that anything that came in as a specific grant, for instance, high-priority schools grant, well, that's not a good example...
Private.
Because that becomes, but if it was specific, and it was a grant, and it was not part of the state funding that ended up in Tier One or Tier Two, that money was not touched and cannot be swept by the district, because that is specialized money. Now, in terms of the arts...
Do they know that? Do all these people out there that have those funds?
Yes, sir, they do.
PB Middle knows that?
As far as I know, because I've been talking to PB Middle, so...
I know. All right. Thank you.
I would say to you, for instance, like arts and music, we froze those at one time, and we did take some of that money, but they did get some of that money back. So, for instance, we've worked with some schools that said we didn't have the money, and I will tell you that we went back and we said, yes, you do have this money. Because of the freeze, and I will say this, because of the freeze during the year, there was some major confusion, because we were asking them to justify as much as possible every dime they were spending, but we did go back and unfreeze some of those funding sources.
Well, see, it's too bad I don't know that, but the next piece of it is this, because of the way we keep our books, somebody giving, and let's say they, I'm going to make this up just simply, somebody gives us a million bucks for a musical program and for instruments, all right? So, we put it into our books and supply account, because that's the only one we got for it, and it's attached to some, you know, some other, I don't know all your intricate budget numbers. So, then, we freeze it because it looks like the money, the two colors of money got mixed. So, we freeze it because we say, oh, okay, well, that's in this account, which is a regular district fund, because that was the only place we could put it at the time the grant money came in. And then, we say, but that's, we need that money, so we're going to take it away. And what we did was, and maybe I'm wrong, but if I am, I have no evidence to see that I'm not, then, we said, okay, that money's carryover money we wanted, it's not yours to keep. Okay? And in that money was two colors of money. One was a grant, and the other was state money or whatever. See, that's, since there's no way to label that, it's very hard for us to find that out and to answer the schools about what the heck happened to their money, or what their grant, what their grantor got. Here comes a guy that knows. Mr., here he is right behind you.
Yeah. And I would say to you that if we know of instances where there's money that has been given to the schools from outside of state dollars or federal dollars, that those funds we have tried to maintain and keep intact.
I'll be a release of people that I have to talk to.
John, we do work with all the schools, because we have set up a unique resource called contributions, and any entity that wants to donate the funds to a school, the schools are all aware that they have this resource set up, and a lot of them funnel all their contributions in there, so they have audited books with the district. Some might unintentionally just put in their discretionary funds, but all the analysts strongly counsel the sites to put them in their contribution resource, and that is always off the table for district uses.
And we don't sweep those accounts.
Is that now or before?
What's that? Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I heard from these people...
The point is, we've never swept those accounts, is what you're saying.
Not that one.
Okay. So, can we finish the revenues in and then ask questions?
Thank you. We'll keep coming down through these, and I'll do it...
Just the revenues in first, okay?
Yes. Revenue limits, you can see, the next one, line four, is unrestricted and special ed revenue generated by average daily attendance is approximately 632 million dollars. Then, federal reserve, that's our Title I dollars, these are 110 million, 170. State revenues, lottery class size reduction, TIG dollars, 264 million. Local revenues, interest in grants, 92 million. Extended, expanded high school lunch period, we're estimating about a million in revenue there. Breakfast program, 1.2 million. Minimum days lunch, about 740 million dollars. Increase of half percent in district-wide attendance, 3 million. And we did make that this year, by the way. So, this is dollars that we feel comfortable in counting on. This is not, I mean, I know that was a question that some of you had. 50 percent of the 2009-10 federal IDEA stimulus funding for special ed that we can use is approximately 6.4 million. A 2 percent additional administrative fee to retirees premiums, we will manage that now. We can charge that, 311,000 dollars. Federal state stabilization dollars that you did such a nice job lobbying to make sure that we would receive is 22.5 million. I would like to pause there just a second to let you know those are half of those dollars, and they all could be used this year, or they could be used half this year and half next year. We're not trying to be presumptuous, so I just wanted to stop and let you know that this is how we calculated them for our planning purposes. Then, categorical flexibility transfers, 10 million dollars. Indirect costs for grant administration, 951,000. Miscellaneous incomes, which is transfers from property management, retiring medical funds, about 1 million. For a total revenue of 1 billion, 228 million, 190,035 dollars.
Okay. Board member questions or comments? Let's move to Dr. Evans.
Okay. First of all, on the, a couple of these are things that I've been famous for asking questions about, but first of all, on the number 16, the indirect cost for grant administration, we were given a figure of 5.9 million dollars. And I kept asking, you know, what is that 5.9? Why does it have to be? I mean, I'm always glad when it goes down, but when something goes down so quickly, I'm afraid it could also go up. And so, it's gone from 5.9 to 0.9.
Hello, Mr. Evans. I can speak to that one. The previous document that showed a drop of 5.9 was a document that just showed a variance and change. So, what it didn't show was the beginning amount of 12 million and the new amount of 6 million. What this does is this shows you a grand total amount, and the two documents show different aspects of the exact same number, so it gets very confusing. So, let me just expand more on that 5.9. That 5.9 drop in indirect was showing the amount of revenue the unrestricted was going to receive less than what it had previously received. So, it shows a variance from a prior year to the current year.
Excuse me, but it seemed to me that what we were told is 5.9 additional for administration of the grants due to change of the rules, not less categorical money.
Okay. So, what happened with the indirect hospital was, and let me, would you like to hear, yes, would you like to hear the reason behind that drop? And it might take a second. What happens every year is, the, not every year, every five years, the state Department of Education is in negotiations with the federal Department of Education, and they come to terms on how to apply the indirect, what can also be considered general administration cost to administering all these grants. And this recent negotiations had a significant change in the, what was allowable under general administration, and they excluded what they call sub-agreements. administration, and they excluded what they call sub-agreements. So, they no longer consider our contracted services as a general administration, so we could not put that in the numerator, causing our indirect rate, our general administration rate, to decrease. That rate is then applied to all grants and resources, Title I, TIG, and a number of them. There are a couple of cases where grants specifically does not allow indirect costs, but by and large, most of them do. And so, that rate substantially decreased because the numerator decreased. And so, we used to have in our unrestricted, it acts like a revenue for us in unrestricted, because we can charge the general admin to these grants, recoup that cost, and put the revenue into unrestricted. Our revenue there went from approximately $11, $12 million down to, down by 5.9, $5, $6 million. So, that's that variance number you've seen on previous documents. This number here, though, is a grand total for the general fund, and it is substantially different from the other number, because the other number was what was charged out of unrestricted to restricted resources, acting as a revenue. This number here shows total general fund, which includes both unrestricted and restricted. And if this is restricted and this is unrestricted, it's going from one part of the general fund to the other. And in this view here is total general fund, so they net together, and all we see here is the amount of indirect we're allowed to charge to other funds. We charge child development fund, adult ed fund, and a little bit to food services fund. So, this is what the general fund is recouping from those three funds mentioned.
Okay, so this is income that the general fund is getting, that we can charge to some of these other funds. Some of them just kind of take care of themselves, but this is some that we can kind of take out and put into our general fund.
Yes, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, it depends on views, we cannot charge capital funds indirect, otherwise it'd be substantially lower.
Okay, and then the other question is on number 12, and this is one thing I've been asking. We have 6.4 million, I know that previously it was sometimes 6.8, 7.5. But the other question on that was, I was told that besides the 50% flexibility, there was also flexibility on any amount that was above the 2005, 2006 special ed baseline.
Yeah, Dr. Evans, you know, you've sent that in email, and we're checking with Monica to confirm that. I haven't been able to find that anywhere, so we've actually have researched it.
I checked, I talked to Jeff Semerlin from the council of great city schools, right after you asked me about it and I saw your email, Jeff said, "No," that he had not heard that-
I haven't either.
And he's been in all of the meetings, and he said that you could take 50% of it, but that was it.
Well, in various pieces of information that we received, and I can't say for sure where they were, whether it's the council of great city schools or others, that there was-
We would double check, we'll go back and I'll ask him again, and we'll ask our folks to try to run it down, but this is-
Right, because I think that's a federal question, we're talking about federal, not Monica, the state levels.
Okay. And again, this is estimates, again, this number's an estimate until we actually get dollars released to us.
That's correct.
These are the last numbers we've heard, and as you know, we've heard different numbers.
Okay, that, those are the two questions I had.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barrera, please.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions. One is, James, my calculator won't go out, there's many digits, but, so what is the $78 million beginning balance divided by the 1.2 billion revenue? What is that? What's the, what would our balance percentage be, our reserve?
Take it right there. Yeah, he wants that division.
I mean, the beginning balance is a percentage of total revenue?
As a percentage of total revenue, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
You get there.
Is that a net, beginning balance, or is that after all liability subtracted?
Hang on, just kidding. Fifteen percent.
Six point four percent, Ken says.
Yeah.
Six point four percent.
Yeah.
Have a nice little cocktail.
Yeah, six point four makes more sense.
Six point five percent, sorry.
Six point five percent. So, if we brought our expenses equal to our revenues, or expenses would also be 1.2, is, am I correct that our reserve then, does our beginning balance equal our reserve?
No.
No?
Yeah, part of, I can walk you through the beginning balance, the numbers that we have here if you want.
Okay, what I'm trying to get is, our requirement is to keep a 2% reserve.
That's correct.
So, what is our reserve at the end of the year if we balance our budget?
About 24 million, depending on small flex relations in the total general fund, about 24 million.
Do we have that in our expense line on line 36?
Yeah.
Line 36, 23.9.
And then there's two other legally required reserves, 37 and 38. We need to keep in reserve an equal value of all inventory in the district, and then below that, an equal value of what we have as normal prepaid expenses at the end of the year.
So, for example, Mr. Barrera, if you look at the 23.9, that's the 2% required by ed code?
Yes.
And then further down the road, essentially from an accounting perspective, it would include on the line 37, inventory reserves, that would be fuel, food, and some books. And then also on line 38, that's travel and postage. We've got some prepaid travel and postage booked for us, that's about two-thirds travel and about a third postage on the $992,000.
Okay.
That's what those account for. So, that's some total of those three line items?
Yeah.
Or what we would keep in reserve?
That's what we would keep in reserve, but what we've got in the bank is much more than that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got, essentially, you could look at, from a revenue perspective, it's the 1.2, you know, on our general fund, restricted and unrestricted combined.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and then my other question is on 14, I don't know where I saw this, but what I understood was that the stabilization dollars from the federal government to the state, that most of the money for 2009-10 from the federal government has come to the state, but that in the fall, there would be additional stabilization money that would come from the federal?
Go ahead, Terry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, they had, essentially, they've given us an estimate of what they think the full dollar amount is, and Debbie, when did they release, did they release the first Q of stabilization or not?
Sixty to seventy percent.
Sixty to seventy percent? Yeah, up to seventy percent, and the next portion is November, right? Yeah, and the next portion will be November.
But they, from what I understand is these are, and you asked me about that, and I asked that question too.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, what we were told is that we're going to get stabilization dollars that, you know, are about $40, $45 million, and those are stabilization dollars, total.
Total, including, and so some of that has been released-
That's stabilization.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, he understands, and then we'll get, we'll get the, what they're calling stimulus dollars, which they should call Title I dollars, to help low-performing schools and do those kinds of things, that's a separate pot of money. And there's about four other pots of money-
Yeah.
-that we can apply for grants to.
I understand, I'm just trying to get, so, we've got a projected total dollar amount of stabilization money that we're getting for 9-10, or for the next two years, and that's roughly forty, you know, five million.
Right.
And the federal government has so far released to the state 60 to 70% of that, and will release the rest of it in November.
In November, as I understand, yeah.
Okay.
Any final comments? Mr. DeBak?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. DeBak, then?
Well, just the beginning balance, did that includes an estimate of accounts payable or encumbrances of any kind?
Yes, it does.
So, how's that compare with the ending balance of last year? Is that the identical figure?
Yes, on the second interim, it is. It's the second interim number.
This matches our second interim that we essentially submitted to the county office of education.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeBak. I have a couple of questions, and first of all, let me thank you for this format, it's a little bit easier for people like me who are more linear thinking. But what I would like is, I think some of these questions you answered, I didn't get all the notes signed as you was answering them. On item number four, your revenue limited sources, you have both your unrestricted and your special ed, and my question was, was these by, I thought special ed came from the federal government, does the state give us additional monies, and which one comes from which? Because we know that special ed funds are restricted, but then you have some restricted funds there, so what are you referring to when you say unrestricted? And then, my other question for number four is, the special ed amount that is generated per ADA that did state, or is it a federal census amount according to ADA as well?
Number four is just state revenue. That is ADA generated, so special ed students generate ADA revenue, it goes right to the special ed program. All the regular ed students do the same, and it goes into unrestricted. We do get special ed from the federal, that'd be on line five, federal revenue.
Okay, so, it would help me if these numbers was actually broken out and clarified, and then if you're saying that special ed is also part of number five, I'd like to know the difference, how much is Title I from the federal government, and how much is special ed? But then going back to number four, you have an unrestricted item there. What are those unrestricted funds that we're receiving from the state?
Those are the dollars we get essentially from our ADA revenue. It just comes in as an unrestricted resource. So, they account for, based on the number of students we have in our seats on a daily basis cumulative.
Okay, and I'm getting to a huge point with all of this later on, so I think that's why it has to be broken out for us as to what we're receiving unrestricted, what we're receiving for special ed, and the like.
And just to expand on your question there, number six-
Yes.
And number seven, those also have mixed colors of money. Both of those have unrestricted, unrestricted, so class size reduction up there is unrestricted, summer lottery is unrestricted, TIG, as you know, is restricted. Well, actually, that's changing this year, that's going to become unrestricted, so, but we can definitely break those down to different colors.
Okay, now, and I am just, and these are projections, and so if I was to compare the amount, let's look at line number six for just a second, if I was to compare the amount on line number six to what you received last year, is it approximately maybe a 20% difference, or 30% difference, given the fact that we have lost-
Do you want us to pull up the sheet itself?
Okay, and the reason I'm asking these questions is because I kind of find it kind of difficult to have such a high total revenue source, especially when we've had so many cuts from our state. If we've been saying that our budget has been 1.2 billion for the last three or four, five years, and we've had significant cuts, and right now we're looking at it again, it's 1.2 billion, it doesn't make sense in my head.
Sure, I think, a couple of things to think about, though, is if you look at line, just give me a second here, line 15-
Yes.
And line 14.
Okay.
So, line 14 essentially is $22.5 million of stabilization dollars.
Alright.
And then, so that's essentially backfilling our gap.
Alright.
And then, the categorical flexibility, the 10.1 million.
And special ed.
And special ed?
Yeah, special ed, so that's why you'll see-
So, that was there before, yeah, special ed backfill.
So, what we've done there is, we wanted to show a forecast, as Terry had guided us to, to essentially show you what we think we're going to be getting, those dollar amounts.
Oh, absolutely, I'm just, I'm saying this because it's very, when we're out in the public-
Sure.
And we're saying we've been cut severely, and I'm, you say we have a $1.2 billion budget, and they see this, and they say, "You have a $1.2 billion budget." Where is it that the state has really cut funds from our budget? So, we need to be very clear as we are engaging our constituents that some of these monies that are there are backfill.
And one-time money.
And one-time money, and I think that that's very important for us to know as well.
Ms. Jackson, so you know, and Terry, we've been, hopefully Friday, we kind of have a work session planned where we're going through all the puts and takes from year over year, so we can show Terry and you folks and say, "All right, here are the dollar amounts that we've got, you do see a 1.2 billion, but based on the 1.2 billion, here are the reasons why it's still that amount."
Okay.
So, we are going through that reconciliation process.
That would really be very helpful. On item number 15, I think that should be broken out as well.
Just one other point, President Jackson, because I think this is important too. If you will quickly look at number, under expenditures, number-
We're going to get there.
Okay.
We're going to get there, I just want to focus on what we're coming in, because, and certainly for some of us really, you know, po folks that had the budget, we do it item by item, you know, we get a check from here, a few pennies from here, and I want to make sure that we are all understanding exactly where our monies are coming from. So, on line item number 15, where it says categorical flexibility transfers, I'm not sure where that is coming from, because if our categorical fund is up here earlier, then where is this additional 10 million coming from, please?
Yeah, the first portion for the 10 million was deferred maintenance. If you remember, based on what the state did from an action perspective, they allowed us the flexibility to take certain restricted resources-
Okay.
-in the buckets of tiers one, two, and three.
Seven point two five million.
Yes, deferred maintenance is a good answer, I mean, I just needed to have that.
Sure, so, Ms. Jackson, the tier three resources, we were able to take advantage of moving those dollars in under the deferred maintenance bucket.
Well, this is when the assembly, back in, what was it, February, in their beneficence, decided that we could have flexibility between categoricals, right?
Yeah.
So, that's where that 10 million came from.
Right, the question is, what, because this is next year's budget, and guess what, what I'm not under, what I'm trying to, and maybe I just got a headache and I'm not thinking totally clearly here, but if you tell me that we're getting a certain limit from the state, and our state revenue is a certain amount, which is 600 and so, and then you tell me our categorical transfers, that's coming from a different, thank you, that's coming from a different place. And so, I guess I'm just trying to make sure, I don't want us counting money twice, not saying that here's our money from all of our ADA and our categoricals and our Title I and our TIG and all the state revenues, there's 91, 91 million, but then down here, you're transferring money, and so those transfers can't be associated with any of those money that are listed up in the other-
Deferred maintenance is actually in a separate fund.
Okay.
It's not the general fund, it's a deferred maintenance fund, so it's a rare case of taking a capital-type fund in.
Very good, okay.
Well, you know, we end up having here 14 different funds at the school district, and so in those funds, you know, they got the specific requirements of how you can move dollars or not. We are taking advantage of the flexibility they've given us in deferred maintenance. The other portion of that is costs associated with summer school, so that's what makes up the two.
Okay, I guess my point is, and certainly, give me a minute here. At this point, I think the board should see all of the revenues, whatever limits they may have. So, that means that if you have categorical flexible transfers, I can't see how that's different from what you have up here at number seven, or number six. If number six is all of our state funds that come into us, okay, all of our categoricals, I'm taking it right, lottery, class size, all 14 of them that we get, if that is line item number six, once it gets here, we can transfer between them. That 91, we can transfer in between them how we use them, that's local control. But what you have again down here is you've got some other transfers. If that is coming from another budget, then that budget should be attached to this somewhere. So, if you're saying that we got a whole nother facilities budget or whatever budget, then that should be here, because this board needs at some point in time, I'm not, just needs to see all the monies that we have. And so, when you see all the monies, and this goes back to, just a minute, then we can understand better, because I, it's hard for a person like me to understand, I got one item, say I'm getting all the state money, but then you say I'm going to transfer in between, that's going to give me up to 10 million, so then, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, and if I can just expand on that, and so basically, this is general fund, so then we'll bring back child development fund, food service fund, deferred maintenance fund, state school facilities fund, is what you're going to do.
So, the question is, none of those monies, child service, I mean, child, the food service, none of those are in this current budget?
Correct, in any of these general fund resources, and so when we bring them in from the deferred maintenance fund, we need to show them here. The, once it gets in the fund, it becomes a resource within the fund, but if you go from fund to fund to fund-
But my question is, I want to make sure I understood you correctly, none of those, the food service, the childcare, none of those are in this document right now?
None of our capital funds, correct.
And my question becomes, why?
Well, by law, they are what's called, referred to nationally as enterprise zones, they have to stand alone.
They can stand alone, but to me, you should have a sheet over here, or a category that says enterprise zones, so we, because again, and I say to people, school board members, you know, we come from all walks of life, we don't know all this intricate detail, and so sometimes you talk to us like we do, and we really, really don't.
That's good feedback.
Because I don't know how many other board members up here didn't know that those items weren't included.
Yeah, so what we've got, what I'm working on with the team is, like I talked about on Friday, we're breaking down all of our funds, and so for instance, with the deferred one, we'll show essentially the debits and credits for the puts and takes behind it, so if we've had a certain balance that we're working on, and we're going to actually use that from a flexibility perspective, we'll show the transfer in and out for you on that. So, what you're not seeing is essentially how that fund went down from a revenue standpoint, and we transferred the seven points to the line over.
I think that's important, it's very important.
I agree with you.
Because let's take just the food service piece. I have no idea what our food service, whatever you call enterprise zone is, but what I do know is we're saying that we're going to have increased revenues and- But what I do know is we're saying that we're going to have increased revenues in our breakfast and lunch for a couple of million that are here, okay? And what I do know, maybe what I'm thinking I know, is that you're also going to transfer some money from them as part of line number 15. And that also may be true. But my point is that this board would like to know all of that, not pieces. And I think that's the mindset that we're trying to shift the staff to. We don't want pieces anymore. We want the whole enchilada, and let us decide how we're going to eat it once we get it. But that's not happening right now. You're giving us a little piece here, a little piece there, and then we go back and say, well, wait a minute, you know, that doesn't fit. And it doesn't fit because we don't have all the information. So let me finish my last couple of questions here. So that was for number 15. Number four, number 15. I think number 16 you went ahead and answered, because you said that the grant administration costs included, this grant administration was really for Title I, TIG, the state federal types of grants?
Or, yeah, even state, yes, you're right, state, federal, local grants, other funds.
Okay.
And this particular 900K, that is the amount we charge to the other funds.
I'm not in, okay, I'm not interested in the amount, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out what it's, what makes that up. But is that about 3% to 4%? Is that a percentage that we charge?
3.05 for 910.
Okay, 3.05% for 910, okay? And is that set by us or is that set by someone else?
The state and the federal departments of ed agree upon the formula, and then we compile it once a year when we close the books.
And is that, is that true for the funds that they get? One of the questions that we had asked while we were in DC was that as monies come to the state and they disseminate the money, not to take any more than they're allowed to. And so is their share of the money coming through them 3.05%?
So, let's see, the money...
Yeah, they're asking that.
Yeah, that money doesn't...
Ms. Jackson, I don't know if we can answer that. I mean, you're essentially asking me if...
The question is, can we find out? Because again, if we are lobbying and we're asking to make sure that the money that's entitled to come to the districts are coming to the districts, and they said that the state should only keep its administrative fee, and administrative fee is set and it's 3.5%, but they're telling me that it's 4%, then I need to know that, so that I'm not, they're not pulling the wool over my eyes and keeping some of our money. We need every penny, period.
Yeah. We'll have to research that one, because I don't have the answer for that.
Mr. Debacken, then Ms. Nakamura, please.
The biggest problem that this poses is, we call it, we're talking about general fund, but we're not talking about all funds. And that's what I think President Jackson's talking about. For example, when you have categorically flexible transfers, number 15 of 10 million sum, that's coming out of something.
It's coming out of our, it's coming out...
It's coming out of another budget we have in another fund. So then, let's say that other fund does some good for people. The people that are affected by that are going to say to us, why did you do that? Okay? So then the argument should be, what's the effect of these transfers in? It's like, it's like the old TIG mega thing, oh, we went back two years ago where we had, and a good example was during that, we had integration, school improvement, I can't think of all the others, but gifted and all that. So then the state says, okay, we're going to make a mega item, you get to choose within those. The only people that benefited from that were the people that didn't have some of those programs already, because they would have got those, those categories never applied to them. In our case, every single one of those applied to us, so the choice was which of them do we give up? So the flexibility worked in a reverse against us when the mega item came in. It was not, not, you know, it was a TIG flexibility. The truth of the matter is, we had every single one of those accounts, so the question was which of those did we damage? Okay? Well, now, when you go to this, you say, here's a general fund, and we're making it well. We're making it well by stealing it from something else. That's, I think, what the board needs to know.
Sure.
Is when we get the money, categorical flexibility doesn't say it came from what it came from. But let's say it came from insurance.
Well, we've got a couple of things we...
Or self-insurance, and then, or legal costs, and then all of a sudden, next year, legal costs skyrocket, then it wasn't a savings at all.
You're seeing the view here of the general fund, both restricted and unrestricted.
Yeah.
So traditionally, from a restricted standpoint, that's where you saw all of our categoricals.
Well, that's why I like the old pie graphs, because a good example would be a pie graph of our income, which shows all these things, including categoricals and all that stuff. Then, if you had a before and after, the pie graph, what you're saying is, this pie graph of before and this pie graph after we make all these transfers to protect general ed will actually show a different slice of the pie for funds that we have already always been receiving. And what we're doing in order to survive with the general fund is we're stealing it from whatever else we used to do. And a good example is, we have any arguments right now about textbooks. So we've got flexibility, right, on the textbook dollars? But how many of us have been barraged with all of the questions about why, if you don't do the chemistry, and if you don't do the foreign language, rural language, all these things are going to hurt us? The argument is, the flexibility is basically taken away from another fund. So what we're doing is balancing salaries with textbooks. Okay? And that is part of the reason why we don't have an answer when we're being lobbied, because we say to them, well, do you want to take a pay cut? Or do you want your books? That's really the issue, but they don't have that in front of them. They only see us doing something to their textbooks. So those are the kinds of problems we face with our constituents, is it looks like, to everybody outside of this arena, it looks like all the money's in one pie. It's not. But as soon as we start stealing from one to the other, it is all in one pie. And that is very hard to explain.
So what we'll do next is provide some details for you, but just so I can backtrack quickly. We'll provide information for you on total funds. I'm also going to provide for you the rules of spend, on what, how we can spend it and not spend it. So for example, let's just quickly, on state school facilities, it is a sizable amount of money that we have here. I don't remember the actual off the top of my head, but that money essentially was awarded to us based on Prop MM, and we don't get another match from that. When we spend that to zero, we spend it to zero. Although Prop S is providing us with another match, it just won't be a sizable and in the same kind of cash flow amounts that we got with Prop MM. So I'll show you the total fund.
Real quickly, just to finish it off, when you get into that picture, here's what it looks like to the public. You got all these cuts, but you solved the problem so the cuts weren't real. The problem is, the cuts are all over in these other funds. Now, what we've done is shifted from, so we don't have a number here that says how much we get from the state altogether. What we do is, we've been able to accommodate, by stealing from all these other outside funds and putting it in a general fund, all the money that the state took away from us. And so they're saying, oh, you don't have any worry, because you've still got a beginning balance, you've still got some way to transfer money in. So, duh, you didn't need it in the first place. That's not really true, but that's the issue, the way it looks to the public, and to, actually to our employees and to the community.
And it feels that way to the staff, to be frank with you.
I know, I know.
Because we're increasingly asked to do more with less.
I know.
I think you've made some very good points. I could also say to you that without your lobbying efforts and the Assembly's willing to give us that flexibility to do what you've just described, I don't know where we would be.
Well, a lot of people, this lobby got the same benefit, so I guess we helped a lot of people.
I think you're right.
Okay, we can go ahead and look at the revenue.
I was going to, yeah. Well, I, you know, it is complex when you're looking at the funds, but this, to use, this is the enchilada that we can chew on today, right? Okay. The other enchiladas in the other funds, which are detailed in the budget book that we did last year, which is, it's pretty complicated. You can open up the budget book and find out what all the other funds are, you know, and those funds, we made that decision back in February, that we would rob Peter to pay Paul here. And so this is simply one item in this, but this is the enchilada where we can have effect, and that's what we're here for today, correct? We don't have any effect on the other enchiladas right now, those decisions are passed, right? We're not going to be able to change those funds, those decisions are already made, right?
Yeah, right now, we have a few pieces of criteria, so they're providing us the opportunity to have still flexibility in our tier three categorical resources. They're also essentially giving us state stabilization dollars and stimulus dollars for IDEA, Title I.
I know that, James. I'm just saying that this is, this is the general fund.
This is general fund combined.
This is our biggest pot of money, right?
Unrestricted and restricted.
All right. All of the other funds are little tiny, little picky things. 10 million dollars is all we could suck out of them, right?
And real quick, they, by law, when I said enterprise fund, what that really meant was, by law, they are supposed to be self-efficient. Now, that's, let me explain just quickly. You can take general fund dollars and give them, you just can't take any of their profits and use it for other things. The reason that we can claim these dollars for increasing service to cafeteria accounts is because you were giving the cafeteria account general fund dollars. So basically, what this means is, we're going to be able to give them this much less.
Okay. So we vacuumed up everything that we can take out of these little funds, and that decision is done, right? So what you're presenting to us is that we made this decision on categorical flexibility for a tune of 10 million dollars.
That's correct.
Okay? So right now, the enchilada we're working on is this general fund.
That's correct.
And this is, this is our place where we can actually make a difference.
Right.
Right? Okay. But if anyone's interested out in the public, if you go to our budget book from last year, which is on our webpage, it will explain all of the different funds, although the numbers will be slightly out of date, correct, at this point in time?
Exactly.
We're going to redo the budget book this year?
Yes, we are in the process of doing that right now.
We're in the process of doing that, right? So that will be, you know, that, all of these numbers will be captured.
Right.
And those changes, and puts and takes, and all the rest of it will be captured in that. Okay.
And I would say on the revenue side, just to refresh what, or reinforce what Dr. Greer said, the 4.5 on line item number two, that could move a little bit, because we're, you know, closing out the year, and there are a lot of transactions we have to reconcile.
Okay. Ms. Barrera, please.
Okay. So on the expenditures, my big question is...
Let's go over them first.
You want to go over them first?
Yeah, we're ready for them.
Okay.
Please, expenditures, please.
Okay.
Basically, on expenditures, as you go down through here, you can see under certificated salaries about 605 million dollars, classified salaries 210 million. Me, and, I'm going to pause to tell you, there are managers and principals and others in each one of those areas. Staff and column increases, and this is what I got ready to say to President Jackson earlier, this approximate 19 million dollars here, when people say, your budget continues to go up, but you get cut, there's certain things that you can, by law, you continue to have to put in there. Health and welfare, 147 million. Fairable benefits, such as retirement, workers' comp, unemployment, you know, 131 million. Books and supplies, about 70 million. Contracted services, around 22 million. Special ed services that are contracted, 20, almost 26 million. Utilities, approximately 22 million. Tax revenue, notes, interest, 6.45 million. Telecommunications, 5.6 million. Maintenance agreements, 5.3 million. Capital outlay, equipment, computers, et cetera, about 3 million. Outgoing transfers to the county office of ed, about 750,000. Contributions to insurance funds, bus replacement funds, et cetera, 5.5 million. Grant carryover, 8 million. Economic uncertainty reserves, inventory reserve, it's reserved for prepaid expenses. Those are the things that James talked to you about earlier. For a total expenditure or expense line item of, one being 315,973,791 dollars. That's just a quick overview of this, and staff will be glad to answer any questions.
Richard Barrera, please.
You have one, Richard.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that the revised AO2 that you just gave us...
Yeah.
Has the same expense, total expense number, 1.3 billion, but you've increased expenses. So is that, is the math correct? Does AO2 add up?
No, I'm not sure what AO2, which is AO2, Cheryl?
We need to put the date, the time, or the day, or whatever it is on these.
It's this, James, what we're looking at up here.
Gotcha.
But what we got last night...
Yeah, this, this is different, because if you look at the, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different, because again, what you're looking at is, for example, the impact of the SERP. And William and this group were up here until 10 o'clock last night, getting SERP numbers and getting that included in here.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
But the big difference, I'm sorry, is right here, is on the original one, fully-funded school site formulas, which is 44 million, that was taken out, and then amounts were added to all the other figures, and that's how it came up.
Yeah, what happened is, when we reviewed, I reviewed this with the board president, we talked about this. And so what we did is, to fully fund the school sites, we moved that amount up, because we didn't want it to be confusing, because we have fully funded it.
Yeah.
And we broke that apart, and the amount of fully-funded school sites was not just for teachers, it was also for classified.
Yeah.
So we pulled those out, and we think it's more transparent.
Okay. So then, that makes sense. So then my...
So, Mr. Barrera, what we did is, we took the 44 million.
Yeah.
And we actually put it, we applied it to our formula like in about 15 minutes this morning, and that's how we balanced back to it.
Okay.
So you really saw, if you do the math like Dr. Evans did, you would see the one line showing the school site allocation. And then if you add the other three back, you'll see that we're back to a balance.
Okay. So then, so my question on 20, certificated salaries, I was talking to Dr. Morris about this earlier. The budget books, as I understand it, for the school sites had 24 to 1 allocations for K to 3. So is this number assuming 24 to 1?
Yeah, on the budget, on those, yeah, it is, yep.
Okay. But if that's...
So that may, we will have to adjust that once you make your final decision, and we talked about that today.
Well, it's significant, because if we then look at, you know, in the, sort of, you know, the options, you know, so we're double counting, basically, in the, in the options to close the, close the budget, because this, this number should...
That could be a good point.
Right.
You understand what these, you understand the point he's making, Gami? If you're priced for certificated salaries, if you already have incorporated in that cost a funding formula at 24 to 1, and that's already in there, and then if you start recommending, as an option, taking 24 to 1 out...
Yeah.
You could, you could be looking at double counting your...
Yeah, I'll, we'll have to check the formulas on it to make sure that that's...
Gami, I don't think that's the case right now, is it, for our certificated formulas?
It's a swing of 5 million.
No, it's more, it has to be more than that.
It's only in K.
K to 3, but is it also included, 6 to 12?
No, that's not in there.
I'll double check to make sure. I don't have the answer right now.
And is the 6 to 12 in there as well, the additional student per class?
Zandy, come on up, so we can hear that.
That's somewhere else. The question, I think, if we could get everybody's attention focused back up here again, just
to make sure that we're on the same page, and we, you know, this is a workshop, so we want to get it cleaned up and straightened out. The question that Mr. Barrera has is, in your salaries, in your certificated salaries up here, which includes teachers, did you build into that salary, did you build into that, as you sent workbooks out to schools, in this number of $605,433,000, did you go ahead and build into that class sizes of 24 to 1 in K through 3? Did you build in additional class size increases in grades 6 through 12, even though we have to negotiate those? Did you add the cost for those, did you add those cost savings in that number?
Okay. So, what the number is, is, the salary numbers are, by and large, second interim, we're still working on our updated forecast numbers. So, we put in these new formula allocation, fully fund the formula at $44 million. So, our forecast at second interim did not have any formula changes, so it had 20 to 1.
Yeah.
We, the fully fund them, in the $44 million, was 20 to 1 also. So, what they did this morning was spread the $44 million among the salaries, so we're still at 20 to 1.
Okay.
And are we at...
And keep in mind, our baseline was essentially the second interim report.
So, the point, so the point being is that, well, I think the question is that you've got this funded in here at 20 to 1 right now.
Yeah.
So, okay, so it's based on the second interim?
A lot of these numbers are. We have not had the time to fully update.
So, it's a mix. So, some of the, some of the data points are second interim, because that was our best estimate we had, and as we've worked since the second interim, we've been able to adjust some items, like expense items, we've been able to adjust.
Well, that's consistent with the way we're doing all the rest of the funds. We basically are saying there's a baseline, and then the savings that you're reporting are savings based on the change from the baseline.
But, okay...
And that why we're not double counting. If we do the reductions in the, in the categories, and then we subtract the savings, we are double counting.
Okay. But here's, here's then, I think, maybe a bigger question. The second interim, the March, the Plan A and Plan B that we had to, you know, do in March, was premised on a deficit of about $140-some-odd million.
$146 million.
$146. And now, that number's down to 87.
That's with adding the stimulus dollars, the Title I dollars, and...
Yeah. Up in the revenue, if you look at, um...
William, explain it to you.
Eight through about 15, those are all solutions that have been worked into the revenue side, but taken out of the solutions down below. In addition, number 3 is a new one, that's just on the revenue side. Down below...
Hold on, hold on, just a second. Just, just don't lose that thought hole right there. When President Jackson asked us to consider doing this from an expenditure, revenue expenditure standpoint, when you had $146 million deficit, part of the solution to that was in your savings that you voted on.
Mm-hmm.
And so, part of that were revenues.
Mm-hmm.
So, we just simply have reformatted it to make it clear and more transparent, and as William just pointed out, we pulled out of Plans A and B, things that you had already approved, that were revenue generating, and as he said, if you look at, if you look up here at number 8, and kind of just come straight down, you would see those are new revenues that you couple them together, you subtract that from the $146 million, and it shows you with an $87 million shortfall. Now, when we did it this way, we had this conversation, and it is that we knew that people would say, "Well, I thought you had $146 million shortfall." You do. But the way you're filling that hole is, like Mr. DeBecque said, you're transferring from categorical, you're generating new revenue, you've got a 5%, 0.5% increase in student attendance.
Okay. But still, but even with that, what, when we did Plan A, what you did for us is, you took out, so you, total $146 million, and then you basically took the blue group numbers, and that got us down to about $100 million.
$102 million.
$102 million, right?
$102 million.
So, now, our gap is $87 million.
Yeah. Well, you're not seeing is, because we haven't finished yet, I actually have a reconciliation sheet reconciling back on the new format, to tracking back to our $146 million original shortfall.
Uh-huh.
So, for instance, if you look at line item number, what is that, 3, William?
Line item 3.
Line item 3, and, so, line item 3, and then you go to line item 8 through 15, that will start helping us reconcile back to the original issue of the $146 million.
But, putting it simply, you just have increased the income, and that income increase has offset the deficit by so much.
That's correct.
And that is already written into this.
And that's why you see the difference of, instead of 146 or 102, you see it as the $87 million.
I understand the point that you're making, but our challenge, in the middle of March, was a $102 million challenge, and now you're saying our challenge is $87 million.
Right. But when we did the second interim recall, Randy Ward would not let us put in the federal Obama dollars.
I understand. Okay.
So, when you toss those two in on top of that, now, all of a sudden, you're getting, you know, but he can reconcile, we can reconcile, right back to the nickel.
I'm like, almost at $146 right now.
Yeah.
I just haven't finished it.
I understand.
I just haven't finished it presentable.
All right. I'm, I'm good there, then. But then, the last point that I have is, do you anticipate that the expenditures are going to look, so the expenditure numbers here, at least some of them, are based on projections that we had, you know, for our second interim, do you expect that there are going to be changes now that we're actually looking at the budget books?
Yeah. So, part of the reason why it takes us a while to close out the year is because there's literally just so many transactions. Think of a school site and how many transactions they could have on a daily basis. So, part of the reconciliation piece is really reconfirming or adjusting what our forecasts were. When you get to second interim, think about it, it really is a pro forma, or a financial forecast of where we think we're going to be. And what we do is, we look at trend data from previous years, we also look at what the expenses are coming through the pipeline, to try to match those and marry them up.
But I'm not so much talking about current year expenses here, I'm talking about projected 9, 10 expenses.
Right.
Yeah.
Oops, I'm sorry. So, what we've done is traditionally, and even now going forward, is you'll see actually some increases in like utilities and those kinds of things, healthcare, because we're pretty, we have a pretty good idea on how much those areas are going to increase in costs. So, when you look through our expenditures lines, you know, we're pretty confident what our step and column number is, right? We're pretty confident what our utility number is, telecommunications, those kinds of things, because we're basing that built on how we've spent it, and what kind of program plans that we're going to have in place. Factually, utilities is going down next year in comparison to this year, because of some changes that they've implemented, correct, William?
It's going down from the second interim number. We had a $3 million increase at second interim, now it's all about $2 million increase, so it's, so...
But let's, let's, let's think about, for instance, a department budget. So, let's say the transportation department.
Mm-hmm.
And the transportation department, we had a projection in the middle of March for 9, 10.
We've adjusted that.
You have already adjusted that.
Yeah, we've been, it's like, we have all these activities taking place simultaneously. So, we've been working with Mr. Stover and Terry Burgess, and the transportation team to get the transportation dollars right. So, a couple of things we've done. You'll see some added resources in transportation for the 9, 10 fiscal year, they weren't there in the second interim, they are there today. We've essentially put them into the classified salary line. So, in the classified salary line, we've done a couple of things. We've included them there, and also calculated out any kind of health and welfare benefits. We've also accounted for any percentages of step and column that would do. I wanted to get the true net costs of that, not just the gross or miss a component of it. We've also calculated what the fuel might do, and maintenance and operations expenses as well.
We've also taken these workbooks that we've given out to the departments, and even though we gave a department a certain amount of dollars projected, based on what they said their needs were, we came back and said to them, "We're really in hard financial times. We would like for you to go back and take another scrub at this and take a look at it." I believe, and I can't speak for the rest of the staff, when those workbooks come back in, we will continue to see some additional savings, particularly the central office.
Okay. So, that's basically, so when do we anticipate those numbers coming in?
Yeah, one deadline.
Yeah.
We're, we're missing two budget workbooks, and one is finance.
Okay.
I have to take the hit on that one, and then the other is special ed. Especially, it's just because the size.
Yeah.
It's so big. We're really working with the Rooney team to make sure we get the numbers right.
But aside from finance and special ed, all of the workbooks for the departments?
We've got the workbooks in, and now what we're doing is a couple, a couple of things.
Yeah.
One is, we're checking right away to say, "Do they think they're going to spend more than they spent last, this past year, '08, '09?"
Yeah.
In the reduced world, right?
Yeah.
So, we've got essentially, in the workbook itself, there's a formula that says, "If you overspent or not, if you overspent," it highlights it to say, "Here's how much we're overspent." So, we're looking at the workbooks to find out, are they balanced, right? And one balance point would be, they can't be over what their readjusted budget from this year. After we do that, then we're going to, like Terry said, we're going to work with each department, had to find out, are there additional savings in there?
And what we've also done, folks, and this is different, this is different for the culture of our district, it's different for our finance department, is, in years gone by, what we've discovered is that if a particular budget or a particular school overspent its account, and it just overspent its budget, we basically have been taking lapped salary dollars, and we've taken those dollars and gone back and quote, "Made departments whole." What we're saying to departments now is, that can no longer happen.
Right.
When you get a budget, you've got to spend within that budget, and if you see that you're going to overspend, you've got to put the brakes on, you've got to come to James, you've got to come to me, and we've got to work out why that happened, and how we're going to remediate it, or if we're going to remediate it. We may just simply say, "We're sorry, you've spent your money, you can't buy those extra 50 computers," or whatever you have to do.
Okay. So, when do we anticipate getting a revised budget projection?
Our current deadline is towards the end of May. We are compiling, we have all the site workbooks in, we're, those are all loaded in Peoplesoft, the budget ledger. We are doing the same with the central office, it's, there's a couple of big divisions that are just pending, and there's a lot of smaller pieces left. So, we're looking at the end of May, should be fully loaded, and maybe take a first look, because it's due to your office on the 9th, you know.
Okay.
Wow, that doesn't give us a lot of time.
No, but it's not, yeah, we're going to have to look at how we can, you know, anyway.
And I would say, keep in mind that what we're doing, Mr. Barrera and Board, is that it's a little bit different from last year and how we've normally collected things, because, remember, we kind of took that zero-based approach. We've asked the team to essentially say, "You're going to start from zero, you're not going to start from 100, and you add $5 to it." And so, that in itself has been a little bit time-consuming, because we're changing the culture and the mindset of actually, how do we, how do we do a couple of things? One is, how do we budget with the fact that we have to go down in costs, and how do I really budget based on programmatic need versus, "I'm just going to add additional dollars to my continuing budget." So, that in itself has been very complicated, and kind of a lot of hard work, to be real frank with you, because when you look at a $1.3 billion financial plan, total in $2 billion, there's just a lot of different sources that hit those funds.
Dr. Evans, please.
Okay. Just one question on the certificated salaries, which is $605 million. As far as that being post SERP, how did you, did you calculate the replacement salaries as being beginning teachers, or moderate, or is it just based on that second interim?
Yeah, second interim, so it's still existing staff. So, now that the SERPs go, we will now have...
Well, the problem...
So, then, the SERP would be listed.
The problems you have with that is this, is, is we tried to work through this with the SERP folks, and I see he's apparently, he may be gone, but as we looked at this, we had this conversation, and rather, versus reducing that there, the savings generated by the SERP people not being there, and us replacing them with a lower salary, that's your savings versus, if you take it out here and lower it, and you put it in there, you'll be double counting it, and we kind of left that alone, because that, if you may recall, Dr. Evans...
So, it's listed below?
Yeah, so that was one of your original questions, and one of your challenge to us was to be careful not to double count those.
So, we're assuming the 100% replacement?
Right.
In the, in the certificated line, but then down below, you see the adjusted amount of where we think the savings amount will be.
Right. Okay, good. And, and the other thing, I mean, I certainly appreciate the tremendous job as far as getting all of these facts and figures together during these, these final weeks. I just want to ask, in terms of, as we get the technology onboard, this issue of, we've got to reconcile all these transactions, I'm assuming would be a nonthing, just like when I click on my bank account online, it's already...
Yeah.
In real time, I mean, it's...
Right. I'm pushing, I'm working with Darrell to really push really hard on a data warehouse, and essentially, that, we, it's called a business intelligence layer, it's kind of a smart tool that lets us pull data quickly and precisely, so the numbers, right now, a lot of our work is done in Microsoft Excel. Fabulous tool, but we, you know, manage a billion-dollar plan, and a lot of it in Microsoft Excel. So, that data warehouse and that BI tool that we've got, I think it might be coming for approval tonight, maybe, is critical that we get that approved. That will really help with efficiencies, and time and reporting. There's canned reports that that thing will do for us automatically, based on, once, the hard part will be the implementation piece, putting all the data points together.
And then, all the monitoring in terms of a school starting to go, just approaching the end of their budget, whatever, there could be all kinds of alerts and everything, right?
And the good thing about it, Dr. Evans, is it'll all be tied to Peoplesoft, which is our source of truth, because it's our general ledger.
Right. Okay. And so, then, I guess what would be helpful would be, as you're working on all this, to have, say, for the past three years, for each area, for each department, what was budgeted and what was spent, so that we can kind of make some comparison and see if there's progress. And it may even be that, in some cases, there wasn't even a firm budget for that amount, it was just spending and not budgeting, but at least if we have that information for the last three years, and then this, you know, and moving forward, that would be a really, really good comparison to have. And I can use, as an example, the Board of Education budget. I don't know, when it comes to, you know, expenses for lobbying and conferences and so forth, we got a very, very good and very detailed report on all the expenses for the different conferences and so forth from each board member, but that's not compared against, this is how much we allotted for that, it's, you know, that doesn't come up when you're making a reservation to do something. So, that's just one little example, but we, I can see how it's school sites and everywhere else, how it works, if it's, we buy what we need, as opposed to, this is how much we have. That doesn't mean, obviously, you understand that, but I mean, not that things couldn't be changed, but at least there would be a step to do that, as opposed to just reconciling the books at the end of the year.
I understand. And as a point of reference, Ms. Jackson, just want to say that we can plan and be as tightly controlled as possible, but just sometimes during the year in business, something's going to come up. Something could come up that was either unplanned or unbudgeted. Just so, as an FYI for you to know, that we can have all the controls in place as much as possible, but just in doing business, something, fuel could go up, for instance, you know, those kinds of things.
We understand that, and we're okay with that, we're just trying to, you know, get things...
I think, I think our concern is that this has been, you know, and it's simply a reflection, I've talked with you about this before, with budget reports, you know, all of us have Quicken now, we know how to do transaction reports, and it's certainly been in other businesses available. So, I'm glad to hear you're going to be buying this software, because, you know, Dr. Evans is correct. We don't know, these, these reports that we get are unintelligible, and I know that that's been a longstanding...
They're getting better, thank you.
...process in the district, but I know you're working on it, but...
Well, the, the, the side benefit be for the finance, but the real benefit in that tool is going to be on all the academic instruction.
Exactly. I want to get to Mr. DeBecque.
Sorry. He has to speak. He had a question?
And it's a little bit academic, Lewis, I want us to try to...
Yeah, I'm going to try and make it up. The big problem I have, I think, with budgets and the, and the way they work in the district is that the budgets are stated, but then, and we go through the year, and they get adjusted by books and supplies, you know, forever. It would, it would really be important to me that we had a way, maybe it's not there, but we projected the, all the personnel costs of a department before they ever get budget approval on other stuff. So, for example, you could have, you could have a positive balance in your account, but that positive balance could be offset completely by the fact that you have a whole series of employees that are going to be there all year, and they've already encumbered all the balance you've got. But that doesn't matter, because you still have a balance. So, now then, I say, "Oh, I'd like to buy this," or "I'd like to buy that," and you say, "Well, your balance is okay, it includes the amount to cover that." What it doesn't include is a projection of your personnel costs till the end of the year. So, therefore, we're going to approve the, it's within your budget. And hopefully, it'll come out of your books and supplies miscellaneous account, and it'll be covered. By the end of the year, I bet you there's a whole lot of accounts, including the board budget, that is over expended by a lot. And so, I don't, when you say you have a budget, the budget's only as good as the supervision of the budget, and that includes projections past the current time for encumbrances that you already have. Payrolls encumbered already, so you should be able to say, "That's gone from the day one." And now, all you've got left is this much, and if you start spending that, and you're going past the end, then don't spend anymore, because it doesn't matter.
And, you know, and I would say I have to give you, folks, kudos for, one of the benefits of centralized procurement, based on all the things we're doing, we're collecting all of our actual number of contracts, but even more importantly, from my perspective, we are gaining the ability to encumber those funds like we should before those purchases are made. So, when we do a forecast, we can essentially say, "No, we can't spend the $10 million, because that's pre-encumbered."
There you go.
There you go, absolutely.
Whereas before, it was siloed, and we didn't have that opportunity to do that. So, based on what you folks and Dr. Greer wanted us to do, there really is some real benefit to doing those kinds of things already, because now I've got encumbrances sitting in my Peoplesoft system to say, "Here's these contracts that we didn't know before."
So, then, there should be requests for reallocation coming out of the pressures of these people that find themselves faced with a dead end on their budget.
Absolutely.
And that's okay with me, because then we can say, "All right, you know, yes or no, it's that priority of the board or somebody else."
But if it's just leftover sloppiness, you know, we're going to steal it from another account who hasn't spent their money, that's not the stuff that we're about, I don't think.
Kim Stokkamara, do we have a public comment?
Yeah, I just, I, I think for purposes of clarity for the public, and when we did the budget book, something that came very clear to me was that it was like looking at different sides of a mountain. You could look at, you know, the mountain from the point of view of departments, you could look at the mountain from a point of view of the school site, you could look at the mountain from the point of view of the funds, you know, it, but it's all the same mountain, okay? That you're just looking at it from different perspectives, and the lens that we're looking at it through today is from the point of view of funds. These 14 funds that we have, and the largest of those funds is the general fund. Now, I've heard questions up here where we've asked about departments, I've heard questions where we've asked about schools, but that's looking at the budget through a different lens, and the purpose that you do that for is in fact to really get a better idea of the budget as a whole, and we have the opportunity to look at the mountain from all those different points of view, from the department view, from the school view, and every, every area thinks that their view is the absolute most important. If you're at the school, you think that's the most important view of the budget. But, you know, we're looking at this mountain from the point of view of the funds, right? And so as we go through this, you know, we need to keep in mind that what we're trying to work through are the, the funds, not the schools, not the departments, and if we want to take a look at that view, that's, that's valuable, and that's why we actually do that in education. But today, we're only going through the lens or through the point of view of the funds for the entire budget for the school district, correct?
Yeah, we're really concentrating on general fund.
Yes.
Restricted and unrestricted, that's where we focus today.
But we need to look at all of our funds, but I want us to go ahead and move, move along, and certainly, board members, you have the rest of this particular item that you need to, to look at. We do have a public speaker, superintendent, you want to make a final comment on this, please?
Thank you, President Jackson. If you will, please turn over to page two of three. We started talking just quickly a little bit about the fact that lines 42 through 56, you have already approved as a board. Those numbers, we pulled from your, your Plan A and B, and you can see what that looks like, and we have you a running shortfall total over to the right-hand side to just give you an idea of what that, that, those numbers are. You can come down to line 57 and go down through here, and you can see that if you do the line 57, the TIG tier one and two reductions, we have, we've added additional cuts at the central office through reorganization. You had talked at one time, and you looked at the 21 ninth grade class size reduction, K2 class size reduction, that's at our 30 most impacted schools, where it was 15 to one, those eight elementary language teachers, the GATE seminar. This proposal is a little different than the one you saw before, increasing class size from K3 versus 20 to 24. If you reverse that to 20 to 22, just increase it by two students, you can see that by doing that, you would basically, I think, James is what you and William, you might need to come up and look at this again, but that would basically balance your budget and...
You're planning, yeah.
Are you where you can look at that?
Yes.
For the, for the time being. We have also found out that Governor's coming out this Thursday on the 14th with a, his, with two different May revises, which will be before the election on the 19th. One which we hear he is going to say, "This is what it would look like if the prop passes, props pass," and one, what it would look like if the props fail. We got that notification this morning. The reason I simply point this out to you is because on your afternoon agenda or your evening agenda, you have a district-wide furlough for all classified staff excluding bus drivers for a four-day, and you would, my understanding is if you look at this data, that you would, you would need to do that, and if you did that, right now, that would leave you a surplus of 300, 3.3 million dollars. Is that correct, William?
Yes, if all the above items are, are a go.
So like 57?
If all the other items were a go, just, just trying to let you see that, because you've always asked, what are the consequences of the decisions we make?
I think that we have a lot of items to, to look at on this particular, on page two. I think there's a lot of board member questions around this, and we're getting close, we already passed a lot of time for this particular item. What I, I guess I would entertain, if the board members don't mind, is some people want to make a couple of comments. We do have a public speaker, and our closed session starts at noon, so I would ask that if there's comments to help clarify things for the staff, please make them, if, those types of comments, and then let's get to our public comments. So is there any comments, quick comments from the board, Mr. Barrera?
Just a quick question, so 64, why, why are you excluding bus drivers?
65.
I'm sorry, am I looking at...
64.
64.
Currently, the, do they have any days?
The contract with them calls for a specific number of workdays, is my understanding, and so because of that, you, you cannot do that without negotiating that with their, their union. The areas you see are shaded are contract areas.
Okay, so we should, we should put then the bus drivers down into the shaded area? We should, we should get that number and put it into the shaded area? Okay, okay.
And we've got to check on that because I'm, I'm not sure whether they work days that they don't actually transport students.
Well, and that, I was going to bring, and I think maybe that's what our speaker's going to talk about, because I think the same applies to the para educator, so I think we need to be clear, if we're including furlough days for people who don't work unless school is in session, and who else that would be, and I guess just in general, I guess just in general, the question is, are there people that we just can't furlough?
Well, there's, the, the bus drivers, of course, if they're only working days that they're driving buses for children, it's, I don't understand how you would furlough those, and contractually, you can't. If there's folks that work days where the kids are there, what you would have to say to them is, "We're furloughing you four days, we'd have to work with you to decide which four days that would be, because we're not going to be able to hire a sub to take your place." That's, and, you know, we have other folks like teachers and administrators, that their furlough days might could come during the Thanksgiving break or during winter break when they are being paid for a longer calendar. I mean, those are the questions that...
Since this item is on the agenda this afternoon, I think probably would like to hear some of these comments that are being made right now, so I'd ask that that question be restated this afternoon and that the response be at a time when the general public, more of them can hear the responses.
And meanwhile, we'll try to track down those specific questions.
Okay, thank you. Any more quick questions or comments? We have a public speaker, please. Our public speaker is Jane Balser, please come forward. You have three minutes to speak on your topic of the four-day reduction, work reduction.
Thank you for letting me speak. It's just regarding about the four days, workdays reduction, I would not call it four workdays reduction. I just have some question. When is go, where, when is it going to be implemented? Is the school year is going to be cut four days, the student is not going to be there? For the para, we only work when the student is there. So if savings you're looking for, then you need to ask which day, that school day, well, the para will be off. Because we already are not getting paid three days in the week of Thanksgiving, because the, the excuse was we cannot take the vacation, we cannot take the sixth day, the sixth day because there is no student in the site. So mostly the para is driven by the student being in the site. So as a president of that chapter, if the para is going to take four days workdays reduction, we're going to take it in four days workdays reduction, and I'm representing almost 3,000 para's. So you're going to have 3,000 para's that you need to get substituted. So where is the saving on that? So we need, I know that you're going to have in a closed session, and I don't know if this has been brought to you, so I, that's why I came down here to let you know that the para work when the student is there. And mostly, we are driven by IEPs and special education. We have 2,000 special education employee that is servicing the student. We service the student directly. So a lot of us are mostly 10-month employee, whether they are year-round school or not. So when you do your closed session, maybe these are the questions you have to ask. Which of those school days where the para is going to be taken off? And for that, who is the, who's going to service the student for San Diego City School? And thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no other comments, then we will adjourn and go to close. The, our closed session starts at noon, so I'll see you on 12 o'clock. Thank you. Any comments?